All right, thank you for that new shortened and upbeat intro, SCGTV. We're gonna go ahead and get it called to order at nine o'clock and observe a moment of silence to start out.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have some minutes for approval starting up. We can do them actually all in batch if someone would like to make a motion for the May 30th, 2019, September 17th, 2019, October 3rd, 2019, October 8th, 2019, and November 7th, 2019, minutes.
Make a motion to approve, sir?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Riznardi. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Smith, E1.
I can lend you a copy. We're good. Hello, everybody. All right, I have a resolution here, Miriam. Would you like to come to the podium for me? Bring your friend. Thank you for being here today. I'm going to read this and then we'll give you the floor. Whereas homelessness has caused or hastened the deaths of inadequately housed low-income persons in Brevard County, and whereas the spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding the commitment to end homelessness, and whereas December 21st, the first day of winter and the longest night of the year, has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless, and whereas the Brevard Homeless Coalition has planned three countywide memorial events recognizing the homeless people of Brevard County who have passed away in the past year. Events will be held at Harry T. Moore Social Services Center in Titusville, Central Brevard Sharing Center in Cocoa, and Daily Bread in Melbourne. And whereas in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Brevard County are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for fellow citizens, especially those who are poor and homeless, and whereas in remembering those who have died on our streets, in our emergency shelters, and in condemned and abandoned properties from ailments or conditions directly related to homelessness, the cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent as is the collective commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby designate December 21, 2019, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of December 2019, AD. Mr. Chair, I recommend that we pass this resolution.
I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I apologize, we have a comment here before we call that. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a statement in this resolution which I found curious. I asked staff about it. It's the whereas in remembrance of those who died, quote, "in our emergency shelters." So I contacted Dr. Wallace, who's the Director of Public Safety, and apparently in 2004, we had one hospice patient that died in a special needs shelter, but that person, to the best of his knowledge, was not homeless. So the question is, for the sponsor, are you aware of any deaths that staff isn't aware of in our emergency shelters?
No, I am not.
Are you concerned about the accuracy of this resolution?
I'm concerned about all accuracies, but I'm not sure that this, if it is inaccurate, rises to the occasion of...
Well, I understand since, you know, this would be your 31st, but accuracy still does matter, and before any of us vote on a resolution where we would take responsibility for a death that may or may not occur, I think that probably it would be good to have that information.
Perhaps maybe the best way to get this moving forward and resolve this is just to strike those three or so words, you know, "in our shelters" or "in the shelters," and then vote on the resolution otherwise identical.
Mr. Moore, would you like to comment on this before we move forward?
This has been standard language that comes from the National Homeless Coalition, so it's just, we just use their language without changing it necessarily.
Okay.
But it has happened in the past, and when they talk about emergency shelters, it's not necessarily the county emergency shelters, it's just, they could be at an emergency shelter, they could've been in there and then went out in the streets and died right after that.
Or it could be the Salvation Army Shelter or some other shelter.
Exactly.
So it's a generality, it's not a specific. But I can strike that. If it pleases the Commissioner, I can strike that.
And my second will stand.
Out of, you know, an abundance of caution, I did do the strike through, so you would have a copy of it. Aye, again, due to the repeated...
Thank you.
I don't need to read it again, but this is number 31, so I will be voting against this.
Okay, so I apologize for calling that vote a little bit early. We're gonna call a vote as to the resolution is amended, which is identical but for the strike through with the words "in our emergency shelters." So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, passes 4-1. You have the floor, Dr. Moore.
I just want to thank the Commissioners on behalf of Brevard Homeless Coalition and all of our provider agencies that work with homeless and homeless prevention services throughout Brevard County. Thank you for acknowledging the people that we have lost this year in homelessness.
Quite welcome.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you for all you do, and I thank you for putting this together, and I do know nationwide that the situation happens, and I get it, so I just want to say that this isn't your bad, but thank you so much.
And Dr. Moore, I want to thank you as well for your help on the Public Safety Coordinating Committee. I know it's always good to have some decent, well-informed perspectives there, and I certainly appreciate having you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say that everybody isn't born with a silver spoon in their mouth, they don't have it easy, and some people have it very, very rough, and so it's terrific that there are people like you guys that are out there that care about those folks. So thank you.
Thank you.
Item F is in foxtrot. May I have a motion to pass that in bulk, less F8 unless someone desires something pulled? Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to pull F11.
Okay, less F8 and less F11, may I have a motion?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Riznardi with a second from Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor of passing the consent agenda, less F8 and F11? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So Ian, I don't know if you'd like to come up and address F8, please? As dangerous as it is to call you up dressed like that...
Absolutely, Commissioner. I just, I'd probably have to ask Jeff if the camera can handle the outfit.
Can we tone down the contrast?
So, good morning and happy holidays. F8 is approval for an agency called Central Florida Cares Health Systems to submit a grant application for the second phase of a Florida Department of Children and Families Criminal Justice Mental Health and Substance Abuse Reinvestment Grant. Two years ago, they were given approval by the Board to submit the planning grant, which they were awarded this past July. They're in the process of the planning grant. That is to create a strategic plan for Brevard. It is still moving along. Come January, they're anticipating that the state is going to be putting out implementation grants. So they'd like approval for, from the Board, to go after some of those implementation grants to be able to support some of the items, the priorities that have come out of the planning process. Some of those are for the creation of a reentry process and team, expansion of a mobile response team and crisis intervention team, permanent supportive housing and supportive employment, development of short-term residential treatment facility for co-occurring disorders, and development of a central receiving system. There is no request for the Board for any match. Any match that's required is going to come from the partner agencies or activities that other agencies do that support those items. This also continues the Public Safety Coordinating Council as their planning council.
And I'll tack onto that as well, that at yesterday's Public Safety Coordinating Committee meeting, no one expressed any sort of disapproval or concerns with this. So with that, if someone would like to make a motion?
So move.
All right, Commissioner Smith made the motion, second? All right, second from Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir, and thank you for being easy on my retinas yesterday as well. All right, Peter, if you'd care to give us an intro on F11?
Yes, sir. Good morning and happy holidays to you.
Likewise.
This is a follow-up. Keeper of Our Beautiful received a Tourism and Lagoon grant from the TDC and the Board not too long ago to clean four of the causeways, and in order to do that, they use a truck as their vehicle. The previous truck that they had was unfortunately totaled when it ran over what they believe was a gas cylinder and exploded, and the back of the truck was blown off. Unfortunately, nobody was hurt, but the truck was completely totaled, so they came back to the Beach Committee and then to the TDC for an additional grant of up to $25,000 to replace that vehicle, so that's what this is concerning.
And Peter, just real quickly, if you could help me with this, I know we had a conversation not about this particular item, but the original KBB item that was funded in the budget. Was that something, I don't recall if it was TDC or the city that bid it out, but that was something that was subject to a competitive process, was it not?
Yeah, so this is, this is a little separate of it. This was a grant program. The other item that you're referring to is that we have a multi-year contract with the City of Cocoa Beach for KBB to clean the beaches and then one of the causeways that's in Cocoa Beach. That was previously, had been bid out, and then this year, we renewed their, basically renewed the contract with Cocoa Beach for that. They don't use trucks for that, they use four-wheelers, so it's a little, little different.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this would be a question for a representative from KBB, if there is one, or, I mean, I guess I could...
Yes, sir, there's, Brian Bobbitt is here from KBB. If you'd like...
Brian with a Y.
Yes, absolutely.
Good man.
The right way.
Mr. Chair, with your indulgence, thank you. What was the value of the truck that was totaled?
It was a 2005 Nissan Titan with about 260,000 miles on it. We were looking at the repair of it, and the insurance is like, it's just gonna cost way more than what it's worth. We ended up scrapping it out for about $800.
So it was far less than the $25,000 that you're currently requesting, is that...
Correct. And we did get a used truck temporarily to complete the contract at the time of the incident. We paid $3,000 for a Dodge Ram that spent more time in the shop than it did on the road. So the issue is, this truck hauls a heavy load. We tow an ATV daily to different causeways throughout the entire county. We need a heavier truck, we need something with the strength to be able to pull.
Not, not, what kind of truck do you plan on purchasing?
We've worked closely with the City of Cocoa Beach to possibly line up into one of their fleet buys, so we could get the best bang for your buck and be able to get to work immediately.
So when you entered into this contract merely two months ago, did you consider potential costs and risks that may be associated with entering into said contract?
Typically, we do, and we did consider it for this incident. However, for a truck to actually explode on the side of 528 was not something that we were considering to ever be a possibility.
I'm concerned about the precedent that this may set, that we're bailing you out in a contract. Why should we treat KBB any different? My analogy would be, I don't know, Waste Management, you know, one of their trucks exploded. I don't think they would come to the Board and ask for us to replace one of their trucks. We're, I mean, this was an arm-length contract, my understanding is. What makes you any different?
Well, considering that the contract is actually to function for the entire county, the benefit for us to be able to operate like that is something that needs to be in consideration. We're a medium-sized nonprofit, we don't have the funds to be able to go out and buy brand-new trucks, brand-new vehicles. We try to write things into contracts and we chase grants every opportunity we get. However, just for us to go out and spend the money on a truck like that for something that was destroyed along the line of doing work, we just weren't ready for that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to vote against this one. We have a contract with these folks. What happened to the truck was no fault of ours, to the best of my knowledge. KBB should have had insurance that covered comparable truck, and for us to go out and replace a truck that was only valued at a couple thousand dollars with one that is, what, 10 times that amount seems a little unfair. So for that, for that, I fully support the contract, but an additional $25,000 seems a little unfair. If we were to go ahead and bid this out, that would be something different, but that is not the case. So I will be voting against this $25,000.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kraneis, how much money did we give KBB?
So the grant for the causeway, the four causeways, was $60,000, and it's a three-year contract with a two-year renewal.
Okay, and what's included in that contract? What's their service for the county?
They're supposed to clean up four of the causeways in the county, and that includes everything, and not only along the roadside, underneath the causeways, but they even get into the water and remove some of the, some of the plastics from the water as well.
If we were gonna try to pay for this in-house, would it cost more than $60,000?
That would be hard to say, because I'm not sure exactly how we would solve for that internally.
Because we'd have to buy equipment and then pay salaries?
Exactly, yeah.
And probably take more than one person, right?
Right, we'd be starting from scratch, we'd have to go out and hire people and basically create a, create an organization around that.
Okay, so you'd probably have more than one person that you'd have to supply to, we'd have to supply equipment, so we're probably getting a pretty good bargain out of this, not to mention you guys, you do county, you do countywide projects, and you really do a good job with that, and so, you know, I thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And supplying with you with a truck helps pick up some of this mess that people throw off on the road, roadways and waterways. I think it's a good value, and thank you for that. You could've come back and tried to get more money for more expensive truck, and the TDC did approve it, so they must've felt it was worthy of it, too. So I'm gonna vote in favor of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Peter, is that $60,000 per year or $60,000 for the three years?
It's annually, sir, yes.
Okay. So I don't agree with a lot of things that Commissioner Tabia comes up with, and sometimes I do agree, and I'm kinda in-between on this one. I don't know that we need to be buying a $25,000 truck. If you had a $5,000 truck before, maybe a $12,000 or $15,000 truck, I'm not advocating that you go buy another clunker that you're gonna have to replace in six months or a year and a half, but at the same time, 25 grand buys a pretty decent truck. You can buy a brand-new leftover for probably in the $30,000 to $35,000 range, so I'm kinda in-between here.
Yeah, and if I'm a Commissioner, it's not like we have a specific truck that this price is in mind. When we went to TDC, we originally asked for up to $25,000, so we're not gonna go for like, you know, all the bells and whistles, power windows, locks, Bluetooth and all that stuff. We're looking for just a good, strong motor with good towing compatibility, and that could be, I don't know what the amount would be, I don't want to bring myself into something, but originally, the request was up to $25,000, so it's not guaranteed that we're gonna use all those funds.
You could buy a good work truck, and I mean a work truck, not that's beat-up work truck, a work truck that is brand-new for probably $22,000 to $25,000.
Yes, sir.
Stripped down, so you could buy one of those used for probably in the neighborhood of 12,000 to 15,000. The problem is, they're very hard to find, because the companies, the construction companies, the contractors that buy those, they usually keep them till they don't run anymore.
Absolutely.
So that's kinda the quandary you're in.
Why we were also coordinating, I spoke with Jim McKnight, the same manager of Cocoa Beach, and he's trying to let us get into a fleet buy with them, so we'd be able to, you know, get the best vehicle for the lowest amount of funds, considering, you know...
And on the plus side, if you bought it, you'd probably have it for 15 years.
Yes, absolutely. Keeper of Our Beautiful, you know, as you all know, we go out throughout the county quite a bit for, I mean, we do the roadside cleanups, beach cleanups, fish kill cleanups. In those types of instances, we have to have reliable vehicles to be able to get onsite and get the job done. The vehicle that was damaged during the explosion was our prime vehicle for the last fish kill that we had, so we need something that can haul equipment out there so we can respond to your needs as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Riznardi?
Sorry, still suffering through this cold, I apologize. I appreciate everything Keeper of Our Beautiful does. I mean, I think you've got great representatives, you do a great job in the county, but if the county starts bailing out nonprofits who've committed to a contract, I mean, it's more than 40% of the total cost of your contract is the amount that you're asking for now. You say that you had over $200,000 on this vehicle, or 200,000 miles on this vehicle, you knew that when you, when you bid for the contract. I mean, I'm all for you applying for a grant or seeking monies for this type of thing, but because this is not in line with what the original agreement was, I think it's, I don't think, I just don't feel right about doing it. Again, it's not to take away from the great work that you do, I just think that it's not the county or the TDC's job to bail out a nonprofit.
Commissioner Pritchett?
If this would've been any other nonprofit, I'd agree, but your primary purpose is to take care of Brevard County, and it's actually something that the government would have to perhaps pick up, whether it's municipalities or the unincorporated areas, so I don't know. I think you guys are probably doing pennies-on-the-dollar service for our county, because you have so many volunteers that work with this, too. Again, you mentioned the fish kill, even if we had to man that alone to pick up that, it would've been a significant cost, even trying to get, hiring out people to come in and do that. So again, I think you do a great service for the county, you know, I think it's a very good bargain we're getting, and your primary purpose is Brevard County, so I have no heartburn with funding that for this.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and maybe this is a compromise.
Yes, sir.
Rather than giving you the $25,000 for a new truck, maybe we could amend the contract, front-load the $25,000 payment immediately, and the remainder of the contract then would be decreased accordingly. Therefore, they could get the truck that they wanted, and there would be no harm to any resources, and also, I think that would probably encourage them to spend as little as possible getting said truck. So that would be a compromise that I certainly would be willing to support.
Commissioner Pritchett?
There's also the possibility, maybe we could just put in there that you buy the truck, and if any time this contract becomes void, the truck comes back to county as county property.
We've done that in the past with ATVs and whatnot. TDC's been very great to us in giving us vehicles in the past that have been county property, and when the contract was up or when the vehicle was no longer runnable, we returned it to the county. If I can about the compromise, and I appreciate you being very open to working with us, as Commissioner Pritchett mentioned, we work pennies on the dollar. I try to pay my staff as much as I can, but nowhere near what they're worth. For us to take $25,000 out of the primary would put us into the red ultimately at the end of the year. The cost with fuel, maintenance of a vehicle, plus the ATV maintenance, which has to be serviced every 500 hours, the hourly, the insurance for the staff, the workers' comp for working alongside a road is a nightmare. It wouldn't benefit us to do it that way.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Did you take those, all those factors that you just mentioned into account when you signed the contract?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
When we had our vehicle, and it did have high miles, but it was a Titan, it was a very, very functional truck, the motor still ran good on it, and that's how we got so much out of scrap with it. However, we did not plan to run over a gas cylinder that literally blew the bed off of the truck. That was something that no one could've planned for.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I know, your truck actually blew up from debris that you probably would've picked up.
Yes, ma'am.
If you had an opportunity to get over, and you, and, you know, I'm glad nobody's hurt, but you probably saved, well, most likely, you saved somebody else's car from blowing up behind you.
Yes.
So, you know, again, and I would rather, I probably would like to make the motion that if you ever quit your contract, the automobile comes back to the county, but I would like for it to stay in your possession, therefore, you are paying for the insurance and all those items that go with the truck.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I'm good.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I'm kicking around Commissioner Tabia's compromise. I kinda like it, except I'm still wary about the, requiring you to absolve or the whole $25,000. So if we could do something like that in the neighborhood of, say, 15, then that would put some restraints on you when it comes to your purchasing it, and then if you went over 15, then it's on you guys. So I would like to amend, if I could, can I make an amendment to the proposal?
Hasn't been moved yet, but...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, certainly, I, I'll let Commissioner Tabia speak, and then I'll chime in, and then if someone wants to make a motion, by all means. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, in the spirit of goodwill, I would, should Commissioner Smith make that request, I would gladly second that.
Okay, well, then I'd like to propose a motion that, oh, go ahead.
Have we already had one? I apologize if I overlooked it.
I think Commissioner Pritchett, didn't you make a motion? I thought you said...
I just said I see my...
Okay.
I think we might've been going there, but I don't know that it reached that yet, but, yeah, I was gonna jump in, too.
Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, it's funny, I'm just looking at my notes here, and 15,000 was one of the numbers I had written here, so I don't know if you were sneaking a peek to your left, but, or you were reading my mind either way, but what I was thinking is a reasonable compromise, and it's funny, because I came in here planning to support it as proposed or as listed on the agenda, just based on how extenuating the circumstances were. I don't think anyone plans on driving over something that's gonna blow up part of the car.
No.
That said, that coupled with TDC's support led me, at least coming in, to be in support of this, but listening to some of the concerns, I think perhaps one of the good compromises that's pretty close to what Commissioner Smith was proposing or talking about, was to, to give you 15,000 now, if you'd like another 10, we can front-end load the contract with that additional 10, and reduce it on the back end with that additional 10 if you need it, and then also, as Commissioner Pritchett said, that if you default or breach that contract, that the truck comes back to us. So you'd be given 15 essentially on the spotter as soon as we possibly can, 10 front-end loaded onto the existing 60 contracts, we'd amend it to 70 and then reduce it on the back end, and then have the truck come back. Commissioner Riznardi?
So, just so we're clear, we're increasing the contract by $15,000.
For the, for the current year, we're giving, we're increasing it by 10 if they'd like that, and we're giving them 15.
Okay.
And I defer to Ms. Bentley if she wants to include the 15 in the existing contract or if she wants to handle that separately. My concern is what it ends up costing the county, not how it's phrased.
I don't know where the Board is going yet. When I see the whole picture, then we'll figure out how to write it.
Yeah, 'cause, I can't make the motion, but if you want to make the motion, I'll second it.
Did you guys get that?
I can, okay, so what I'm saying is they'll...
This is my motion?
Right, essentially, we'll authorize staff to make, or to take any, any action necessary to effectuate the following. KBB gets 15,000 period upfront. We will amend the current contract such that instead of being 60,000, we will increase it to 70 for the current year, and at the end of the current contract, and I think we're in the middle of it, is that right, Brian?
We're still, well, we're a little bit on this end of the middle part of it, so we've got about a year and a half, two years left.
Okay, so we're more or less in the middle. On the back end of it, we will reduce it by 10,000, so we're ramping it up for the first year and ramping it down for the last year, separate from the 15, so that gives them the ability to purchase 25 on the front end, being given 15, and being essentially advanced 10 out of the back end of the contract in effect, and then if they default or breach, the 70 soon to be 60 or 50, depending on where we are in the structure, then that truck will come back to the county as county property.
I think I'm missing $5,000.
So...
Oh...
[end of transcript]
Uh.
Yes, sir. Okay. Are you, are you good?
That's good.
Is that, is that good, Ben, a clerk?
Yeah.
All right. You guys are good? Are you good?
Yeah, we're good.
You guys are good? Okay. Everyone's good?
I have a question.
Sir?
So, if you guys only spent 15 grand, we're punishing them by taking away 10 at the end.
Well, we're giving them the 10 and taking it back at the end. So, really, it's, it's simply moving it forward so that they have the capital right now to do what they need to do.
Okay.
So, if, if they don't use the full amount, all they need to do is hold on to it and then do with it as they will at the end, because instead of realizing it at the end of the contract, they're realizing it at the beginning.
Okay. I'll second that.
Or, I don't know.
I made the motion.
Okay. So, all right. We have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. We have a second from Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 5-0. I didn't expect that, but congratulations.
Thank you. If I may real quick.
Just briefly.
Just on behalf of Keeper of Our Beautiful, we want to thank each and every one of you for everything you do to support our mission, and we want to wish everyone here Merry Christmas.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, sir. And I, I really thank your parents as well for spelling your name that way. I do appreciate that.
Absolutely. The right one.
It's rare. It's rare.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. So, moving right along to public comment, we have Charles Tovey from Melbourne. Mr. Tovey?
[inaudible]
Looking sharp today.
Charles Tovey, 2555, Melbourne. Happy holidays and to those that believe Merry Christmas. And I have opinions. If I was driving down the road and hit a canister and my car blew up or my vehicle blew up, I would look for liability on the people that were try, supposed to keep the road safe and clean. And that might help in the litigation of things. But, either way, um, grades come out. I don't, don't have enough time to cover all the things that I say in the three minutes that I'm given, but everybody's passed and it's better to community. Thank you in Brevard. And Commissioner Tobias, thank you for your thorough attentiveness to our county and the resolutions and things that they, items on the agenda and try and pass. And any, every dollar counts. As far as the homeless, anybody can be homeless overnight. And no one knows the time or the day that their number's gonna be called. And so, that could happen anywhere, and if it hasn't happened yet, it probably will. And God bless everybody that, God bless everybody anyways. Might say too much information sometimes, but that's better than not enough and leave people wondering. Um, I do have a willingness. I did comply and paid every time. Closing the win, I'm covering up the windows of my house so I can start taking the, uh, insulation that's been torn up from all the critters going inside my house, 'cause you wouldn't allow me to put a door on or my windows. Volusia County's having a first step. They opened it up. It's for 120 homeless people staying 30 to 90 days, male and female, with a program for release. Orlando has a surplus. They're trying to figure out what to do with their monies that they have extra on. And Virginia has 16,000 miles of polluted rivers. I'll be finishing up, uh, the lagoon, the other northern half by spring, hopefully, and you should see the work afterwards. And Fishman says that he's, hasn't seen the abundance of fish that he's seen in a lagoon in years, if not ever. And the mar, um, triple-tail mullet, snook, and trout are just, and numeral and abundant. Well, that's about the rest of things for now, and, um, I'm gonna keep it short. And thank you for your patience with me, and I apologize for expressing any kind of undue grief to innocent people, and we all matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. That's it for public comment cards today. We're gonna move on to H1. I, I will ask staff just to give us a brief intro on this one, 'cause it's a little bit atypical. I haven't come across one of these in the past year.
Good morning. Have you been wanting to see a few of these in the year?
I don't think your mic's on. Hang on a sec. Let me get you on.
Thank you.
There you go.
Uh, good morning. We, we don't see these very often. Uh, this is a public interest determination to allow wetland impacts for the Bonneface Hire's Chrysler Dodge Jeep relocation from Merritt Island to the corner of Highway 520 and Range Road in Cocoa. Um, the applicant proposes to impact wetlands onsite. Those wetland impacts would be mitigated through a mitigation bank as approved by the St. John's River Water Management District. The code allows for wetland impacts for commercial development, specifically along mitigation-qualified roadways, with the intent to, uh, concentrate commercial development along major corridors and not try to maintain small wetlands in the midst of all of that commercial corridor. Um, this, the wetland that will be impacted is defined by our code as a landscape-level wetland. Um, impacts to landscape-level wetlands are prohibited unless those impacts are determined to be in the public interest by the board. Um, the, the public interest is defined as demonstrable environmental, social, and economic benefits which would accrue to the public at large as a result of the proposed action, and which could clearly exceed all demonstrable environmental, social, and economic costs of the proposed action. The applicant's representative is here and has a card in. If you have any specific questions, um, the basis of their public interest, um, request is that the new location will be accessible for Orlando commuters. Um, it will shift traffic onto higher-capacity roads and alleviate congestion in Merritt Island. They expect a sales volume jump by 50% or greater, generating 30-plus jobs. Um, and that, uh, will turn into, or it will also generate county sales tax and property tax, um, and leave the, um, current site for redevelopment on Merritt Island.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. St. John's has approved the proposal, or there, this is something that's within St. John's?
They, they have not yet approved the proposal, but it, the wetland impacts would have to, the mitigation would have to be approved by the Water Management District to proceed. So, this action, uh, doesn't convey approvals or assurances regarding zoning, site plan approval, or building permits. It's just about the wetland impact determination.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. St. John's will have to approve the mitigation?
Yes.
And county will have to approve the mitigation also?
We would default to the Water Management District's approval.
Okay. But you guys, I talked to you a little bit earlier. You guys have looked at it, and, and there is mitigation going on that satisfies our ordinances, correct?
When they come in for the site plan approval, that's when we'll get into the permitting, and we'll make sure that they're meeting the no-net loss, which, uh, St. John's will ensure occurs in county as well.
Thank you, ma'am. So, I...
I apologize. Yeah. Just, just real briefly, Virginia, and, and help me out with this if I'm incorrect. I'm, I'm unaware of any of these historically ever having been denied. Are you aware of any that, or, or can you think of any that come to mind that have been denied in the past?
I, I'm not aware of any that have been denied.
And then as, as far as complaints or concerns from the community, have we received any? I have not personally.
We're not aware of any complaints.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
And I, I'm, I'm, I think this is a good project, and the fact that we're mitigating the wetlands. I, you know, nobody wants to build on wetlands, but sometimes you have to. And as long as the mitigation takes place, and you gotta get this through the St. John's, and you gotta get through these guys, then, um, I'm, I'm good supporting this.
And I, I think that's part of what Virginia was touching on, that sometimes it's better to have pockets of, of wetlands and, um, in, in, or to avoid having pockets of, of wetlands in certain areas, to have a, a more protected, larger wetland area and perhaps a more rural area. I see she's nodding, so I didn't butcher that too badly.
Yeah, no. The, the wetland toolbox that this process follows was developed by a large committee process that went on for quite some time and was adopted, I think, back in 2008. So, um, we've been using this process successfully for over a decade without community concerns, um, coming to the board. So, it's, it's working well.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett, and a second from Commissioner Smith. He beat you to it. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. And just for the, um, purpose of record, we did have one comment card from John Shepherd with Atlantic Environmental from Melbourne, but it was indicated as questions only, so there was no need to call him up. All right, moving on. Uh, we do not need, unless someone up here would like to have an intro, H2, an ordinance to change the term of appointment from one year to two years, uh, on the Brevard County Library System Board. May I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
All right. A second from Commissioner Zardie. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Item H2 passed unanimously. Unfinished business. There is none. New business. Here's our fun one. Uh, J1. So, this is the one that I had given folks a heads-up, Legislative Intent and Permission to Advertise Adoption of an Animal Abuse Registry Ordinance. This is the one I gave folks a, a heads-up that, um, would be coming, uh, when we had the last meeting. I believe Teresa Clifton also made a comment at the last meeting about the need or the benefit, potential benefit of having an animal abuse registry. One of the things I want to point out with respect to this is that this, the primary purpose of this is to serve as a resource, not a punitive measure by any means. If you look at this, there is no, and I invite Ms. Bentley to correct me if, if she has a different understanding with respect to, to what's been proposed. There is no, um, penalty upon either a hobby breeder, or a pet store, or a shelter, or a, a rescue organization selling or adopting or otherwise transferring ownership of a dog, or a cat, or any animal for that matter, from their ownership to someone else's, even if there's someone that, that happens to be included on this registry. So, I, I did send a copy of this to one of the higher-ups at the Brevard Kennel Club. Uh, I didn't hear anything back, so I, I didn't, you know, I, all I can tell you is there was no opposition voice with respect to that. Uh, this is something, I think, that would serve to benefit the community in the sense that there is no common area, um, that's really publicly accessible, um, in the same way that this would be. Staff time in order to put this in place is de minimis. The programming is already there. Essentially, the clerk's office has volunteered, uh, without any cost to us, uh, on a twice-a-month basis to go ahead and compile all of the information that's been updated since the last time the, um, the spreadsheet was exported or will have been exported, and send that to our IT department. The sheriff's office has already said he's happy to, um, Joe Hellebrand and Sheriff Ivy are happy to link from their animal services website to the county. And all we would have to do is essentially import the batch updated records for the preceding two-week period. The records over 10 years, that would be presumably between 10 years and two weeks, and 10 years old, would fall off so that someone's not penalized and stigmatized for decades on end for something they may have done 30 or 40 years ago. Uh, but with that, I'm gonna go ahead and, and take some comments here from other commissioners, and we'll see where things are at. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think it's kinda, I think it's apparent that probably when this comes back, I, I will not, uh, be supporting it. However, I think it's, uh, appropriate, uh, that we, but I, I vote to give you permission to advertise. Um, I did go over it, and I have a few suggestions or questions, maybe, as you move forward that would make it a more comprehensive, uh, document. Just to be clear, not one that I will support, but one that may be a little bit more, uh, well-rounded. Um, reading through it, I did not find, uh, anyone that was responsible for the enforcement of, uh, these animal control ordinances. Now, the thought would be the sheriff's office, but that's not specifically mentioned, uh, in the document that was provided.
It's toothless. I mean, I'm not being funny or anything. Really, the, the point of this, and, and part of why it's toothless, is because I didn't want there to be unnecessary opposition, and it was more important to me to put in place a resource for folks locally than to stigmatize or punish anyone. So, it is totally toothless in that sense. No one's going to be going to jail. No one's going to be arrested on account of violating any portion of this.
Um, okay. Um, I mean, that may bring up something as, as I'm, as I move forward. Um, how about the sources of determining, uh, convictions? Um, would, would you be okay with, uh, there's no limit in there, like judicial records? I know you just mentioned that that would be transferred over, but that's not specifically stated in the document.
I, I'm had, I'm happy to add specificity if, if you'd like more clarification on exactly where we're, we're obtaining the info. Um, essentially, my understanding from the way that the clerk's office is doing it, I'll, I'll check with them as well. They have an, we, we used to have what was called e-Fax. It may still be out there and accessible to a degree. It was replaced with BECA, not named after my wife. Uh, Brevard Electronic Courthouse Access, or Court Access, I can't recall exactly what it stands for, something along those lines. They have an internal system called FACS, not e-Fax, but FACS, uh, without the E preceding it. My understanding is they will export a spreadsheet from that. I can double-check with them to see specifically what resource they're using internally to export it, but it would be all of the judicial records. So, it would be anything that came before, magistrate, a county court judge, or a circuit judge.
I just wanted to make sure that we were getting it from legitimate sources.
Yeah, no. It's not that, um, you know, Joe from the streets says, "Oh, this guy was convicted of X, and we take it as the word of God."
Got it.
This, this is gonna be coming directly as exported from the clerk or court's office.
That probably would be better in the, in the ordinance to specify that.
Yeah, I'm happy to make that change.
Um, how about a notification process, uh, as to individuals that are added on to this registry?
To notify the folks that are added directly, or?
Um, yes. Uh, for, for instance, you know, my name's added, you know, to the registry. Should there be some sort of notification process? Clearly, I've never had an animal nor ever done anything, you know, bad to an animal, but should there be some sort of notification process for, for this registry, as there are in many other registries out there?
My concern with that is, I don't know what, what true benefit there would be in the sense that by being convicted of, of, uh, some violation of Chapter 828, or even by, by, uh, violation of county ordinance, if you're convicted of that, you're already in that sense stigmatized as much as you would ever be stigmatized, because all of those records are public. I'm not talking about juvenile misdemeanor records, but apart from that, all of that's public. And even the juvenile misdemeanor, that would not be included on this. And I, I can put that in there as well. I see Eden furiously scribbling notes, so we'll, we'll make that abundant as well. So, if it's a juvenile misdemeanor conviction, we'll certainly leave those out. Um...
For, for errors, will there be a way to challenge placement on, on the registry?
Yes. The, the short answer is with respect to that, if they correct the underlying record, when it's updated, we can address it at that time. So, if someone has a court record that's inaccurate, and I, I would doubt that we would have one out of however many we have here. It's, it's really that infrequent. Uh, if they challenge it on the underlying record, um, in, in whatever case might have been in existence or may be in existence, um, I, I have no problem having it updated. I have no problem including language in the ordinance to, to reflect that.
And, and finally, and, and I think you addressed, um, the functionality of it, but from a philosophical perspective, if there is no mechanism of enforcement, and there is no penalty associated, uh, with violating the ordinance, what is the, what is the purpose of the, what is the purpose of the ordinance?
Again, just to, to go back to what I was saying when I introduced it, it's not intended, the, the purpose of this is not to be punitive or to somehow critique individuals. It's solely to serve as a resource for folks that are looking at either selling or adopting out or transferring ownership of animals, so that they have the ability, whether it's a hobby breeder, or a pet store, or a rescue, or a shelter, or, or just an individual that has a dog that happens to have a litter, or a cat that happens to have kittens. They can go somewhere without having to expend a tremendous amount of effort and determine if the individual they're looking at selling, giving, or otherwise transferring ownership of a dog, cat, or, or horse, or whatever they want, really. Um, they can go there and determine if there's cause for concern. And if there is, they can do further research.
And, and help me. Again, I'm gonna be supporting this, but didn't you already address this by saying all that information was already public record, and individuals already had access to that information?
It, they do have access to, to that information, but not in a cohesive way like this. Without having to sign up for a user account or rely on something with public access, this is putting it all in one spot, where the county sheriff's office links to it, where they don't have to go through some esoteric application, and it's gonna be standardized, readily available. Um, and I, I think it's, the format of it is going to be much more conducive to folks looking at it than otherwise would be the case. You, you can't just go through and say, "Okay, I wanna run this person's name for animal, uh, animal issues over a period of 10 years." You're gonna get everything with that particular name. So, if someone's had a, a slew of traffic infractions, you're gonna have to sort through that. If it's a common name, you may give up if there are pages and pages. This is just the animal-related items as specified in the ordinance. To make it simple, it doesn't have any extraneous information, just those items that are relevant, all in that... all in that one spot.
So, I'm sorry, simplicity, I guess, is, was the answer to that.
Ease of access, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I might be with Commissioner Tabia on this one also. I have some reservations. I would like more time to look at it, so I can support it now with the reservation that, for one thing, I would like it specifically, and I know that it is for domestic animals, we need to put that in here, because if some hunter is, somebody has a problem with a hunter, a person, on a personality level, and the hunter shoots a deer, or whatever, that person could point fingers at them for abusing an animal. So I would like to make this very clear, that this is domestic animal abuse.
I don't know that it's necessarily accurate to say that if someone has a problem with a hunter, that they can then say they're abusing animals, such that they'd be reflected in the registry. They'd actually have to go through the court process in order to land on the registry. So it's not that someone who's, for want of a better term, a nut job.
Well, then Howard, if I saw you abusing lynx, how would I?
You'd call the police, and either BCSO would investigate, or since I live in the city of Rockledge, Rockledge would investigate. If they don't, then BCSO would take over and investigate it on their own. They would make a determination as to whether or not charges are potentially appropriate. They would file a probable cause affidavit, or potentially try to do more research. They'd send that to the state attorney's office, so it would have to go through BCSO. Then it would have to go through the state attorney's office. Then you'd have your day in court with either a bench trial with a judge, or with a jury, depending on what they charge you with and what you prefer. So there are a lot of levels someone has to go through. It's not that someone sees something that they don't take the right way, and someone lands on a registry. Yeah, I would not be inclined to allow something like that to occur, because that's a little too dangerous to have someone just labeled by someone that disagrees with how they conduct themselves.
Well, let's just follow that, then. If I saw you shoot a deer, and I thought it was cruel, I could call the sheriff's department and say that I saw you abusing an animal. I could just ruffle your feathers, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, you could do that.
So if we specifically make this domestic animal abuse, then we take that out of the equation altogether. Then the sheriff's office doesn't, can just not get involved right from the beginning.
If the allegation is that you saw me shoot a deer, I could tell you the likelihood that the sheriff would do anything more than respond and take a report is slim to none. I don't want to put Lieutenant Kelly on the spot up here, but I mean, if you want to opine as to this one, I'm sorry, I see you're the only guy in green in the room. Oh, another one in green. There's some stripes there, I see the chevron, so he's hiding.
He's running away.
Yeah, would you mind? I appreciate it, Lieutenant. Yeah, I just, and this is one, since we have a few weeks after this, this ends up moving forward, I would encourage you to have a conversation with either the sheriff, or even with Phil Archer, or one of the folks.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying, is that if we just add that simple word, we take that possibility out of the realm of possibility.
I don't think it's reasonably possible, just to be as direct as I can be, that someone shoots a deer and they end up convicted of animal abuse. If they're skinning the deer alive, they might end up convicted. But the other concern is, although that sounds simple, there's no designator of which I'm aware in the statutes, or in the manner in which they're charged, either in, that would be reflected in either BECA, FACS, or even in the old system e-facts, that would differentiate between domestic and other animals. And I've got to take a look at the specific elements for animal abuses as contained in Chapter 828 Florida statutes. There may be something that addresses that, and I'm happy to bring more info forward when this comes back in January, but I just, I don't see that as being something that, I would doubt that that's ever been the case, that someone has been convicted of animal abuse solely as a result of having shot a deer.
They don't have to be convicted. My point is, they can be harassed.
Oh, but this isn't going to result in them being harassed more or less, because if they're not, if it's simply that someone calls and reports to the police, their taking a report isn't going to result in someone landing on this registry.
I hope you're right.
No, I mean, that's simply the way it's written. And Ms. Bentley, if you want to opine or comment on that?
It currently says conviction.
So they, I mean, you could call it, everyone here could call and say that, you know, I'm beating up dogs and cats and horses and whatever else, and it's not going to, in and of itself, land me on here if this gentleman or that gentleman decides to arrest me, and they end up filing their 923, which is actually the section or the chapter in Florida statutes, 923, which is probable cause affidavit. They send that over to Phil Archer's office, then the attorney gets it and determines it's something appropriate to file, then it'll either go to early resolution, there are three attorneys that handle that, I can give you their names. If it doesn't resolve there, again, assuming it's a felony, then it'll move up to one of the trial attorneys, and from there it goes. I mean, there is, and at that point, you'd also have either six jurors and a couple alternates, or you'd have a bench trial with just a judge. You've got to go through a law of due process to get to a point where you end up on this registry. And again, my concern is, even if I wanted to go along with what you're suggesting by specifying somehow domestic, I realistically, and I'm happy to investigate it, I realistically don't think there's any way that that would be coded within the system such that that could be exported. That would require every single record to be evaluated by hand, which would essentially render the cost to put this in place exponentially increased, to the point that it may be prohibitive at that point. I don't know that the clerk's office would be inclined to waive all costs as they have with this, since it's just programmatically handled. But deputy, are you aware, or if you are either, of anyone ever having been convicted or charged with animal abuse as a result of having shot a deer?
You need me to introduce myself? Lieutenant Simkins with the sheriff's office. Not to my knowledge, not for shooting a deer. You have illegal taking of a deer, which is out of season, or at night poaching, but not for just shooting. But animal cruelty crosses over both lines, domestic and wild. So you can be cruel to animals in the wild as well, and we will charge you if the investigation reveals enough probable cause to make that arrest. But on normal cases, if somebody calls in, we're going to do the investigation, and if probable cause develops, we will probably file the case.
So you don't think it, have you read this at all?
No.
That's just, that's simply my concern, is that at some point, somebody can, somebody with ill intent can use this to harass someone else. If that's not a possibility, then I'm good with it.
I don't think when you talk about shooting a deer, it's going to reach that level.
I just use that as an example. There could be others that I'm not thinking of.
Just in brief, to bring you up to speed, I think the part of it he's concerned is a violation of Chapter 828 Florida statutes. So if it's, you know, illegal taking of a pelt, or, I hate to say, sexual activity involving an animal, something like that, and I don't recall off the top of my head, because it's not something that comes up with that degree of frequency, thank God, what the specific elements of each of those charges might be. But I can certainly, I can certainly have Joe Hellebrand come in when this comes back in January, unless you want to touch base with him individually. But I did send this to animal services to review, and this, what was put on the agenda packet, and the way that it's structured is after revisions, both from the county attorney's office, from animal services, and then also in my office in-house from staff. So that concern was not previously raised, but, you know, I'm certainly happy to have him come back unless you want to have a conversation with him separately, whatever you'd like. All right, I appreciate it. All right, Commissioner Pritchett? Thank you, sir. I apologize for putting you on the spot.
The key term in here is convicted of animal cruelty or abuse crime. So these are people that have already been arrested and convicted, that will be on the registry. I have a position where I work in a minister, and we do background checks all the time on people that are wanting to volunteer, and you can type it in, and names will come up, and you can find every conviction. And again, you're correct, it's not easy trying to pick them out, especially if people got long ones. Thank goodness we don't get a lot of them volunteer for children's ministry. But I could go and find a specific registry for child abusers. So I think this is important also, and actually, I wouldn't mind if we did a registry for each kind of offense that has significant implication on hurting people. And, you know, from just living life a while, people who torture animals, it's a segue to doing really bad things to people. So, I mean, even if you're not into the loving of pets thing, this is significant, that we are able to bring some more attention to this, even in a society we live in today, to help quality of life be a little bit better. And again, the key words in here is cruelty or crimes that have been committed. These aren't small things typically, that the sheriff's department's busy, they're not going to, they're just, I'm counting on them not to be running around onto things that aren't criminal. And something else also, these are laws that are already put into place by the state or federal agencies, so they're enforced by the sheriff. So, you know, if you get people that all of a sudden just start harassing on little things, they're going to end up getting trouble for making harassment calls on things that aren't crimes. So again, the key word in this is cruelty and abuse crime. So I love the idea of a registry. It's an easy place to go and research on people, I don't know, some of these things that have happened in the community we live in just absolutely nauseate me. So I don't think it's a bad idea, because again, the word is cruelty and crime, so it's not small little misdemeanors, or they won't show up in here. Commissioner Loeb, the thing that I do have a little thing with is the prohibitions. I think we should probably remove that out for now and get the registry in place, because although I agree with people who have done bad things, you know, we're going to have to really pick through this about, like, say, somebody's done something at home. So you've got a 16-year-old that did something, and their sister has a pet bird. I say again, I know I'm getting silly, but I think if we just remove that part out and get the registry in place, and then if we need to work on laws as we move forward with that, I'd be in agreement with it.
At the risk of potentially losing a degree of support, I do want to correct one thing that was stated. It is entirely possible someone that has been convicted of a misdemeanor may end up in this as well, but it would have to be.
But it would show the misdemeanor charge in the registry.
Right, it would show what the actual charges are.
Like, they left for a day and didn't feed their dog for a day, could be a misdemeanor, would show up.
Right, if it's something where they did an item of sustenance or.
But then you would see it.
Yeah, it's not that you're guessing as to what they've done, but as far as the prohibitions, I'm happy to strike those. Those are essentially were put in, I don't want to say aspirationally, but to a degree it was aspirationally, in the sense that there is no enforcement mechanism that was contemplated. So if you want those stricken, because it's not that BCSO, even if we pass this, could do anything to enforce that, I'm happy to strike that as well.
Other than that, I have my full support on this. I think it's great.
All right, perfect. Yeah, it's going to have the same effect with or without that, so I'm happy to take that out. Commissioner Riznardi?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as, I know that we talk about it not having any teeth, and I know that obviously you're very passionate about animal welfare, but if it doesn't have any teeth, I'm not sure, I mean, I know that the resource is a great idea. I actually like that a lot. I mean, I was going to move forward in the city, when I was at the city of Palm Bay, with some sexual predator resources, you know, back then, because I understand that, you know, sometimes people need a simple way to access information. But I don't know if I'm willing to go any further than that. And I, the question I have is, what responsibility is it of the seller? Like, if you're selling an animal, whether you be selling it at the mall, or selling it as a hobby breeder, are you responsible as a seller if you sell to somebody who's, you know, abused an animal? I mean, are we putting burden back on them?
Ethically, you have responsibility. Legally, if we adopt this, you don't have any additional responsibility apart from what you have.
But is there something in here legally that says that we do?
No.
Okay.
No, if we had some enforcement mechanism, then yes, but we don't in the way that this is phrased and structured, so no. I mean, again, I'm not encouraging someone to sell to someone that they know has issues, but this isn't putting a burden on them.
Right, and I wouldn't support that at all. But I don't know, since it isn't enforceable, I think the registry is good enough, at least from my perspective.
That's the goal.
I would be fine with just a registry, because then, again, it provides people easy access, especially people who do rescues and, you know, what do you call it, when they temporarily have an animal?
Oh, sure, shelters, or?
No, when you.
Oh, fostering.
Fostering, gosh, my mind went blank. But like, when they're fostering and stuff like that, and when they're debating on whether or not they're going to allow somebody else to take their animal, I think it's great that they have somewhere to go, that they can look up the person to make sure that they're not a monster. But I don't know that putting things in place that we can enforce is a good idea, because then, you know, what liability do we have at that point if people believe that they're protected, I mean, by an ordinance that we can enforce? So again, I'm okay with the registry, but I think that's probably as far as I'm willing to go.
And that's, I think that's perfect, because that's really the driving factor with this. But in terms of just to kind of answer, I don't know if it was a hypothetical or not, but we wouldn't have any liability any which way, and Ms. Bentley, if you disagree, you know, certainly chime in. You're on board? Okay, I'm seeing her responding in the affirmative here. But yeah, I'm happy with that. With the section that Commissioner Pritchett requested be stricken, I don't think there's much confusion in terms of what we're trying to accomplish here. Is there anything further? All right. Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion to advertise.
May I have a second? Second, Commissioner Riznardi. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes 5-0. Thank you all so much. So let's move on here to, we don't have any more public comment. Board reports, Mr. Abate.
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report. Remember the executive session.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Pritchett?
I just want to just pray over all of you guys that you have a wonderful holiday break and season, and you're able to spend time with your family, and that everybody would be safe, and Merry Christmas.
All right, I'm going to actually pause to go last here. Commissioner Tabia? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I would like to piggyback on what Commissioner Pritchett said. I would like to pray that everyone has a wonderful and joyous holiday, and that you spend a lot of time with your loved ones if possible, and realize the blessings that we have in this country.
All right, Commissioner Riznardi?
Merry Christmas and God bless.
All right, I'm going to keep mine simple. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and for those that believe other things or nothing at all, I hope you have a wonderful December. And with that, we're going to go ahead, and I'm going to read this little pre-prepared announcement that Ms. Bentley gave me here, so hopefully I won't goof this up. So as authorized by Section 286.011 Sub 8 Florida statutes, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners will now commence a private attorney-client meeting discussing litigation strategy and settlement negotiations in Waters Mark Development Enterprises, L.C. versus Brevard County, Florida, Case Number 14 CA 41947. The names of the persons attending the private attorney-client meeting are Rita Pritchett, County Commissioner, District 1; myself, Chair and County Commissioner, District 2; Mr. Tabia, John Tabia, County Commissioner, District 3; Kurt Smith, County Commissioner, District 4; Christine Riznardi, County Commissioner, District 5; Frank Abate, County Manager; Eden Bentley, County Attorney; Jad Brewer, Assistant County Attorney; Christine Valliere, Assistant County Attorney; Dale Scott Esquire, Outside Counsel for Brevard County, Florida; Margaret Sheffield, Court Reporter with Hughesby King Services, or, excuse me, Hughesby King Reporting Services, Inc.; Marjorie Sasson, Court Reporter with Hughesby King Reporting Services, Inc., as the alternate. The attorney-client private, pardon me, the attorney-client private meeting will be held in the County Manager's Conference Room, 3rd Floor of Building C is in Charlie, at the Brevard County Government Operations Center, located here at 2725 Judge Fran Jamison Way, Vera, Florida. The estimated length of the attorney-client session is one hour or less. I'll now entertain a motion to temporarily adjourn and reconvene in the County Manager's Conference Room. May I have a motion? All right, Commissioner Riznardi made the motion. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we'll be back within an hour.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida. Space Coast Government Television are the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.